We on?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, welcome to the planning board meeting. June 20th, 2023. It is 7:30. Motion to open the meeting.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, we'll have to do a roll call vote.
EJ, aye. Chris Goodwin, aye.
Brad Legos, aye.
Walt Sarnson, aye.
John. Tonight, we're gonna have a continued public hearing of the remand of matter of 301 Main Street, site plan review and a special permit for parking waiver.
Motion up for the meeting.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Dennis McNulty, aye. Chris Goodwin, aye.
Brad Legos, aye.
Walt Sarnson, aye.
John Stokes, aye.
Lisa, do you want to take this?
Sure, so the board at the last meeting closed the public hearing and started their deliberation and then requested that Annie and I draft, revise the draft of the decision that we had previously provided. So this decision that's in front of you, you had the template at the last meeting, but we filled in all the criteria based upon your discussion. So the findings are the same, but if you go to the criteria on page four, starting on page four, I added page numbers by the way. Starting on page four, you can see where in the italics, we started to add the criteria that the board had discussed at the last meeting. And then the other thing we added were the conditions after the criteria. So perhaps you want to read the findings or the criteria that the board deliberated on, which would be the italics, starting on page four, and then the conditions on page five.
Okay.
I'm happy to, I'm also happy to paraphrase them too, if the chair prefers.
Yeah, I think we've been through this, so I think if we could paraphrase this.
Sure, so in the first criteria under section 50-9.4, which is the main criteria for the parking special permit, you found that the, in fact, that the application, assuming the conditions were met and the representations met by the applicant were adhered to, that in fact, the proposal is not inconsistent with the health and safety and proposed use of reduced parking actually promotes a public benefit. You actually thought that the limitation on traffic or limitation on parking supports less traffic in that area. On the general special credit, special permit criteria, starting at 50-14.6 in the bylaw, which is item eight here, social, economic, and community needs, you did find that the redevelopment reuse of the existing building for a less intense use was important, given the precarious location of the property, and that the improved building and activation of the abandoned building would actually help lift up the economic status of the square generally. Under traffic flow and safety, you found that there would be an impact on traffic flow at the intersection, and without the appropriate conditions, this condition wouldn't be met. However, the proposal reduces the number of parking spaces and also limits the number of cars accessing the site as well as the limitation on hours, which we put forth in the conditions. Adequacy of utilities, you said, was not impacted. There's no negative impact on utilities. Neighborhood character and social structure, you provided that the renovation improvements to the building would be beneficial and activation of the site would be beneficial. Removing the vegetation and repairing the parking lot, striping the parking spaces would be consistent with the neighborhood character and social structure in the square. The impacts on the natural environment, applicant had proposed to clean out the protect, the long unmaintained catch basin and remove overgrown vegetation. Also, the final plan would have to meet Conservation Commission requirements and that there would be no negative, make sure there would be no negative impacts on the natural environment in the sensitive area of the Merrimack River. Fiscal impact, you noted that the activation of the site had a modest positive impact on the tax base and employment of the town, and there would be no negative impact. And then consistency with the town of Groveland Community Development Plan. Again, the redevelopment reuse of the site to a less intense use would be important, given the precarious location of the property. The improved building and activation of the abandoned building would help the economic development of the area, and that would be consistent with improving the town's tax base. And then the conditions that you discussed were that prior to any work being undertaken or any building permit being issued, the applicant would have to provide to the board for its review and approval of final site plan, representing the final improvements to the site, including the proposed landscaping, which would include but not be limited to the removal of the overgrown shrub from the parking area in the front of the building, remove all over of grown vegetation on the site, indicate where vegetation will be planted and maintained, a photometric plan showing the location of proposed lighting fixtures, whether they're located in the building or in the parking lot, and any improvements required by the Conservation Commission. Prior to any work being undertaken on the property or any building permit being issued, the applicant would provide to the board final elevations, representing the improvements being proposed to the elevations as represented by the client, excuse me, by the applicant. The elevations had represent that the two existing overhead doors to the west include opaque glass, new opaque glass, while the overhead door to the east would be clear glass, more akin to a storefront. The north facade would be improved to reflect the fact that it's the first part of the building which is seen when entering the town of Haverhill, from the town of Haverhill, city of Haverhill. The third condition, in the event there are any changes to the site plan that result in any other permitting agency or changes by the applicant, they have to return to the board for a modification, and that modification would have to list all the written changes proposed. That there would be no more than four automobiles parked on the property for the proposed use at any given time. There would be no more than one customer appointment on any day. There'll be no deliveries by third parties. All deliveries or pickups to and from the property for the proposed use shall be undertaken by a truck no larger than a 12-foot box truck. All deliveries or pickups from the property for the proposed use shall be undertaken only between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., and then again from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. There'll be no dumpster placed outside the building on the property for the proposed use. Any work to repair the parking lot has to be undertaken consistent with an order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission. And the applicant would be required to place the appropriate barriers, such as wattles, to prevent runoff to the Merrimack River. And the new parking spaces to the northeast of the building would include a Cape Cod berm to protect runoff from the parking lot to the Merrimack River. No project-specific land disturbance or work on the building shall occur until the applicant obtains all other required permits, including CONCOM and Mass DOT, and those have to be provided to the board. The applicant camp, should not be permitted to store any products, materials, or supplies in the exterior of the building. Prior to the issuance of the building permits, the applicant shall provide the name and contact information of the contractor on site and provide the town with emergency contact information for site supervision. The permit lapses in three years, these are general conditions. Permit lapses in three years, if not substantial use thereof sooner. The, any appeals have to be made pursuant to section 17. The approval of the decision has to be recorded at the registry of deeds, and then it has to be provided to the town prior to any work commencing. So those are general conditions at the end. So I think that we got all the conditions the board discussed and the applicant represented he was willing to take.
So at this time, we should open the, open it up for public comment?
No, you, you closed the public hearing at the last meeting. So this is just deliberation from the board.
Okay.
Right, so this would be any comments the board has, or you can just vote the decision.
Excuse me. Yes, hi, this, this is the abutter Brian Caddell. I just wanted to make one comment, I understand.
You closed the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Brian, we closed the public hearing last meeting.
The post office is not aware of that, and I didn't hear that within the drafted document that I believe you guys had mentioned the post office.
With all due respect, we, we closed this, we had it a public meeting, you know, last time, and unfortunately, if you missed it, there's nothing we can do about it. So the public meeting is closed?
Understood, I was, I was, I was on that. I just noted that, I watched the entire thing as well, and there, there was comment back and forth for the post office, and I didn't hear anything in that decision. But that's it, thank you, I understand.
So at this time, we'll move, I'm sorry, Brian, but we're gonna move for discussion with the board members and make sure this is anything that we want to go over, add, talk about.
The only guy was, is four automobiles, is that sufficient? Is that?
That's exactly what we talked, that was the number we talked about.
That's what we got, three is four employees, right? Possible employees is?
Well, he talked about himself and his, in his admin, and then, you know, basically one, then one customer, and then if the customer, if like the husband and wife come, separate cars.
Separate cars.
Okay, he's a potential sales rep, he's a sales representative that comes in and out every once in a while as well, right?
But I guess that wouldn't take place if the husband and wife were there.
Well, I mean, wouldn't you have a sales rep there with, same time you would have a customer going into looking at plans?
I think.
I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
I think we came up with that formula of four cars.
Okay.
I think we should stick with it. It's not up to us to see how.
I didn't remember her number, that's why I was just making sure.
It was four.
Four, if it was five.
I think it wouldn't be up to us to police the cars, it would be more up to the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody else?
Did the, I see all the conditions in here with a maximum of four cars, so.
Item four on page six.
Six, yep.
I know the post office had an exemption on stuff, but besides that, were they aware of this?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, just wondering if, if they had any input whatsoever.
I don't think it matters at this point.
No, no, I was just wondering, because I gotta get a copy of this anyway, so, I imagine, right? So that would be my only question, this thing, it's got, they have everything on the conditions.
So I would just say, the four cars are for this proposed use, right? So I was pretty clear in the conditions not to impact.
The post office.
The post office use, right? So it's four cars for this proposed use, right?
Yeah, I agree with the max on that. The spaces were 19 plus, if, if on it, so that takes that out of the equation.
I'm, I'm pretty sure this is everything that we talked about.
Yeah, yeah, no, I saw it right down to the lighting.
This is pretty comprehensive.
This is a pretty good draft, this is, you know, well done.
It, yeah, it looks great. I just, the reason why I mentioned the four was, I mean, we're looking, it's a 10, to reduce it to 10 spots, right, is the, is what the reduction is. And you have the post office right there as well. They have the one, they have the handicap spot that's there, as well as an additional employee spot. So that's down to eight, and we're cutting that in half. And there's, there's a little bit of room there, if we're allowing 10 spots, two of them are assigned for, you know, handicap, and the other one is for public, the post office employee. There is a little bit of room there, if we wanted to give that.
Yeah, just for the boards, so I, I took it from the notes, it was a representation from the applicant. So you certainly can do what you want, because there is a reduction request to the 10, but that's, that's where the number came from, so.
That was, again, that was the applicant.
Okay.
You know, I only need four.
Okay, that works, that's good for him, then it's good for me.
So we have the Conservation Commission chairman out there, is that something we can listen to now?
Yeah, but you've closed the public hearing.
Yeah, Mike, we can't.
I'm a member of the board that you're referencing in your permit. I just had a couple of questions regarding what the permit says for clarification to help the commission consider the, any filings with us.
So I think, so it mean the, the decision's gonna speak for itself, right? And there, what basically it says is that whatever, whatever approvals they get from the commission, if it requires a change in the plans, they have to come back to the board. And if they're doing work on the parking lot, they have to put wattles in, and if they, and the board also wanted them to put a Cape Cod berm around one edge of the parking lot that was gonna be improved, so, I mean.
It's really up to the Conservation Commission, that's not.
Right, right, so they're gonna come into your board, Mike.
Right, you can't usurp the authority, but if it causes a change in the plan, then he's gotta come back.
Then he has to come back to see us after you guys.
Right, so you've got to do whatever you have to do, if it causes a change in the plan, he's gotta come back here.
I understand that, but number 10 has a couple of questions on it, it says, "Consistent with the order of conditions." It really should say "with an order of conditions" or "permit", because no order of conditions has been issued at this time.
So that's fine, it can say "an order of conditions".
We can do that.
The, the other question in that same item is it refers to new parking spaces to the northeast of the building. I was just curious where those are.
So they're proposed, they were on the proposed plans that were last week, and it's in an area to the northeast of the building, new spaces to be striped. So I believe it's in a previously improved area, but to be striped. So if you, the whole, yeah, the point is, is that if you don't approve those, then he's gotta come back here and change his permit.
Yep.
Have you seen this plan, Mike?
No.
Okay.
You, you will, and I think you can probably take our draft as a template if you want to. But I think it pretty much covers everything. And then, you know, when they go in to see our board, if you have restrictions and you make changes to what we've come up with, then they're gonna have to come back in to our board.
Yeah, I understand that, I mean, it says that in number three, so that's fine.
Okay. So should we fly a motion to approve the draft?
Let's approve the decision.
Approve the decision. Anybody want to fly a motion?
Yeah, we conditioned it enough, I'll fly it.
All right, I like the conditions. So we have a motion to approve the decision.
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Dennis McNulty, aye. Chris Goodwin, aye.
Brad Legos, aye.
Walt Sarnson, aye.
John Stokes, aye.
Okay. Motion approved, passes.
So I'll finalize this, or Annie and I'll finalize this, and then you can come in and sign it, Mr. Chair, and then it'll get filed with the town clerk, and then we'll send a copy off to the court.
Perfect, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, next up is Oakland Terrace and Benjamin Street bond reduction. Andy, you got something for us?
I do, so at the last meeting, we had only just received TEC's bond reduction for Oakland Terrace and Benjamin Street, right before the meeting, so the board didn't have time to review it, I didn't have time to review it. So now that I've had time to review it, for, let's see, your packet, which is first, the, Oakland Terrace is first, so TEC recommended not reducing that bond at the moment. With the, there was still some work that needed to be completed. I will say, since then, right before that, you have an email from the DeHulu's, so that, TEC issued that report on June 6th, and the DeHulu's sent myself and TEC an email on June 12th, and they have since done a significant amount of work. I did not send TEC back out to take another look at this, just because we got this on the 12th, and there wouldn't have been enough time for TEC to issue a new bond reduction. And knowing the amount that the DeHulu's are working on Benjamin and Oakland, I figured it might be best to hold off on the bond reduction until they've, you know, kind of plateaued on the work again, because it didn't make sense to send TEC out constantly.
How close are they?
They're getting really close, I mean, if you take a look at their email, they've really, as far as site work, I think the interior of Benjamin, the house, still needs work, but that doesn't have anything to do with us. But they, they've done a significant amount of work since just the 6th, when that initial TEC report was issued. But, so we'll just kind of skip over Oakland for right now and go to Benjamin Street, which you can see TEC recommended reducing that by $35,080.
Are we gonna vote on that tonight, or are we gonna, again, move that to the next meeting?
It's up to the board, I think, I mean, you'd be signing off in two different forms, because they're two different projects. And this, this, this was issued, the Benjamin Street one was the initial one that they did two weeks ago, that we just didn't have time to review.
Since we have the chairman of the Conservation Commission here, why are you sitting there, Mike, how they doing over there? How they doing on Oakland and Benjamin?
So I did visit Oakland Terrace with Annie and Steve DeHulu last week, and they have a little bit of work to do on the, the portion of the property called Maple Lane. So he's doing a little bit of work there for us. And as far as Benjamin, we've got an agreement with them to continue the work on the knotweed removal and remediation there in the sedimentation pond. And we directed them to where they were going to place granite markers for the 75-foot buffer zone. So I, I think the commission is, is pleased with the progress that's been made.
So they got rid, did they get rid of the knotweed?
It's gonna take a couple more years. They're working on it.
Okay.
When we get everybody in here next meeting, and.
I think that's.
Yeah, just do everything at the same time.
So, okay, if that's what the board wants, I had, before the meeting, reached out to Dina to kind of give her my thoughts on that it might be easier to send TEC out once like the work has kind of plateaued, so have myself go out to the site with them and TEC and any of the board members who are able to make it. I'm waiting to hear back from her on what she thinks about it and timeline-wise.
I'd like to go out there.
Yeah, depends on when you go.
Okay, so you, you don't want to make a decision, though, on, on Benjamin Street?
No, I think we're just gonna continue it.
Okay.
Anybody agree with that?
Yeah, same, same visit wouldn't be a better idea.
EJ.
Sure, I mean, I'm looking at TEC's recommendation of, we could do the reduction, a small reduction of $35,000, but I mean, I'm always in favor of taking a look at a site, how things are.
I don't think one week is gonna matter.
Yeah, as long as we're not being held up for meetings, and we're meeting the next time, two weeks is, is fine.
John? Any input?
No, that's fine with me.
I will just say, our next meeting falls on the 4th of July, so we probably won't meet again until, wait. We do first and third, right?
Yeah, remember, July and August, those meetings are, if not, nonexistent, but.
No, I realize, but I mean, so right now, we would, we would only meet on the 18th of July, because it's the 4th.
Typically, the planning board, July and August, we don't meet at all, and we have someone to sign off permits and stuff like that, because everybody's vacations.
Well, we're gonna have to make a decision, then we release the $35,000 tonight.
Or July 18th, is July 18th the next meeting?
Yeah, that's four weeks, that's four weeks from now, so.
Yeah, because, because, yeah, so it's July 4th would be the first Tuesday, the 3rd would be July 18th, yeah, so it is, it is a decent.
How about the board makes a, a motion to approve the release of the bond based upon TEC's final report and the completion, so you can.
That pushes it to the 18th again.
Well, not necessarily, because we can give her permission to, to endorse.
I, my only qualm, I guess, with that is that for our Form G, which is our release form, has.
You have to sign it.
With.
Yeah.
You can't grant her power of attorney.
No.
Our attorney just left.
But is there a rush for this?
Um, I don't think there's necessarily a rush, I just, I mean, I'm, well, I'm sure for them, there's a rush, obviously. They would like to reduce the bond, so.
I really wanna go out there.
Yeah.
So I, I understand this, I under, I kind of get where DOJ is going with it. TEC did recommend a $35,000 reduction.
Yeah, but they also recommended a reduction on Billis Way, too.
So it's true, they, it would retain significantly more than Billis Way, if that is the worry. And I did speak with TEC about our issues with as-built plans and everything of that nature. So this would still, they would still have almost $90,000 left in there.
If, if we're gonna meet July 18th, is that, is that the date, and that's it for the summer?
I mean, right now, yes, I know that we do have a on-the-horizon special permit for the aquifer protection overlay, as well as a site plan review and land disturbance special permit in the pipeline for, one's a.
They could timestamp it later, but, so I, I said push it up to the meeting, that way we get to go look at it.
And the only reason is because of, there's been some problems down there since the get-go.
On Benjamin?
On, yeah, Oakland and Benjamin.
Okay, because it's two separate, right?
They are, but they act as one.
Okay, because the reduction's on Benjamin?
Correct.
Not on Oakland?
Correct. There was that pond full of knotweed.
Seventy thousand.
Been going on for over a year.
The board decided, though, to completely pass off the knotweed issue to conservation.
I still want to see it.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, with the knotweed thing, the board had made a decision.
Motion to push it off to the 18th.
Second. All in favor?
Dennis McNulty, aye. Chris Goodwin, aye.
Brad Legos, aye.
Walt Sarnson, aye.
John Stokes, aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Sorry, who seconded that, I didn't quite catch it.
I seconded.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next up, Katie Lane, lot 1 and 6, bond reduction request.
Oh, sorry, it should say lot release, not bond reduction, that's my.
It said bond reduction, I was like, wow, was that bad?
I know, that's my fault, sorry, Kevin. It is a lot release for lots 1 and 2. I did receive the checks for the affordable housing. One and, oh my god.
One and six, right.
What numbers?
One and 6.
Yes.
That's on, that's on the paperwork.
That's what we said.
I'm sorry?
They totaled what?
So it's, we decided $9,000 per lot, so it was a check for $18,000 for this one. So, and it's one Katie Lane and 10 Katie Lane are the future addresses. Yeah, for those.
Money's in, I'd say motion to release, and we still have the rest of them anyway, so.
All in favor?
Nope, roll call. Oh, sorry, okay, sorry, sorry.
Roll call vote.
Dennis McNulty, aye. Chris Goodwin, aye.
Brad Legos, aye.
Walt Sarnson, aye.
John Stokes, aye.
Thanks, Kevin.
You got a form to sign, or?
I do, do you want to do it now, or just at the end?
At the end, I guess.
Okay.
We can do it at the end.
Okay, all right, next up?
I also only have a red pen on me right now.
Next up, Wally, this is gonna be all about you. 48 King Street, Homestead Lane, decision clarification.
Yep, so what's the issue out there?
So I'll give a quick synopsis, Chris, I'm assuming, hi. So essentially, really short version. 48 King Street, which.
The main house is on.
Which is the main house is, as you might have noticed, it has a for sale sign out in front of it. The current owner is concerned about a future buyer looking at the decision and a couple of conditions in it, which state that the, so it was condition number 3, condition number 17, and condition number.
Is that in our packet?
Yep, it's the very last one, or well, yeah, it's like the last big thing in it, and then.
Okay.
There was one more, basically, oh, condition number, no, that was it, that stated that the, all lots had to be single-family dwellings. If you look at the procedural history, it notes that lot 1 is an existing two-family home. So if you look at the very last thing in your meeting packet, you can see that the.
Which, which, well, cut to the chase, which houses that there's a question on?
It's 48 King Street.
Well, that was a pre-existing nonconformance, two-family doesn't apply. This was all for the new road that was going in, all the new houses.
No, I, I understand.
Yeah, so.
So.
But the decision was, was based, for your protection, actually, okay, was on the rest of the subdivision, not the pre-existing nonconforming lot that had been there. So that's grandfathered, and there's no question with that.
But it doesn't say that in the decision, if you read it.
Decision isn't for the existing house, the decision was for all the new houses.
Would it be part of the bylaw at the time?
Yeah, it, I mean, it goes way back, it's, it's a pre-existing nonconformance, and actually, it probably conforms anyway, what's the frontage on it?
It does.
It does conform.
Yeah, so it's, but, so the, the decision was based only on the new, the new road, the new subdivision, the new houses, not the existing.
I understand at the time, in the email correspondence, that that was the opinion of the planning board, what you, what you just said.
Yeah.
The lawyer has told me that, that because the decision states in two places that lots 1 through 6, and mine is 1, must be single-family only, that the, it does say that.
Who's got, we can clarify that, uh, I'll clarify that, 'cause I know exactly what we were doing on that, and what, it was, if you remember, the question came up on that lot on the right-hand side, the last one, or the first one going in. But yours is pre-existing non-conformance, it does not comply to that...
It was conforming.
It does comply, but the decision itself had no bearing on that lot, so you are free and clear with that as it stands.
Well, I understand that's your...
It's Lot 1, and Lot 1 is his lot, so...
Lot 1 was done on the plan, I believe, when the plan, and we had, how many revisions of that, 40?
No, there weren't 40 to revisions.
Revisions of the plan, okay, but initially was one tract of land before the subdivision came out.
Do we have a plan, Annie? This is, he was the only one on the board, so for us...
Brad, Brad, give us your...
Yeah, so what is, what is the attorney need?
So...
For selling the house?
Excuse me?
What, what does he need?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Uh, I'm sorry, what does he need to clarify that?
So, you have a draft here of a letter that...
That is, I, it wasn't stapled to your meeting packet, it was the, uh, we're meeting the meeting.
So can I ask you, did you sell it? Is it sold, and this is a title examiner, examiner?
I have an offer, and the lawyer has told me that because the subdivision, he said, because the subdivision approval does not specifically say that Lot 1 is excluded from the condition that all the lots be single-family, that it's, it, it very probably will be flagged and delay the process. So they're just asking me to get a clarification from the board, that the original intent was that Lot 1 was an existing home built in 1723, that's a two-family, that has the required frontage and acreage to be a two-family, and that the conditions don't apply to Lot 1.
Right, who's the attorney?
And Walter just said that...
It's Smolak and Vaughn in North Andover.
I'll talk to him, if you want, have him call me. Uh, I'll clarify that, and you're right, it, it is, it's free and clear, it's a two-family, it's a pre-existing non-conformance, and because it said Lot 1 in the plan, because remember, the road didn't exist yet, so if, your engineer put it onto the plan to show this was Lot 1, and this is what the rest of it was gonna be, but you're protected there. I'll tell him, he can write something in there, and we'll, the board can endorse it.
That's what the letter is, Wally.
That's what this is.
That's what the letter is at the end, I think.
I, I see this, but if...
They gave this to me.
Yeah, I, I have, oh, I see, it's on the backside.
So...
Okay.
And the first parag...
Rest of it here.
The first paragraph, the registry told me I need to have in there so they can cross-reference this letter of clarification, the original subdivision approval, and my deed, so that someone can find them if they're searching. So that's what the first paragraph is for, to state the book and page of my property and the subdivision.
Who wrote this, Annie?
It was a combined, between myself and the...
And the lawyer, the lawyer gave me all this finding of facts.
Okay, so, um, my opinion, um, and I'm not gonna sign this, because this is way too long, all we need to do is get, if there's a question from the attorney, we do this all the time, is that, uh, your lot is a pre-existing non-conformant, 1777? Okay, I, I believe that it was, and that it is not part of the restriction on the memorandum of decision for Homestead, and we'll endorse that.
Well, I know that's your opinion, but you're not a lawyer, and the lawyer is...
No, I'm the plan, I was the planning board chair at the time, and I know what we did. So, it's the same thing.
Does it call that out in the decision, though?
Was it?
Does it call that out in the decision?
It, it didn't in the time, because of the plan that it made, but, yes, did we? Yes. Is it protected? Yes. Is it a two-family? Absolutely, and it will remain that way. So get your attorney to, to put a letter of clarification, not a modification to a decision, is what I would call this.
That's not a modification to a decision, it says...
So...
If, the last line says...
I see what it says.
The planning board reviewed the subdivision approval and voted to clarify that the original intent of the decision was to exclude Lot 1 from the conditions and restrictions imposed by said decision.
Again, who wrote this?
The lawyer.
And I...
You want me to write my own?
And edited it.
I, I can write my own and send it.
Yeah, this is, I under, this is a template, you guys need to do what you need to do.
Right, so, so, e, and typically, the attorneys do this, so we don't, we don't waste any of the board's time or the town's money for something like this, but he's right, it, it is a two-family, and I'll stand on that. Uh, I will gladly endorse that, I know exactly what we did, but it was because of the way the subdivision was designed, that where Lot 1 was mentioned on the plan, because it was the only structure there at the time.
All right, so help us understand what you did at then, and what was in place.
So, well, what we did is, is the way they designed it, if you look at the plan, I mean, it was a big parcel, and they subdivided it, is, is what they did. So then they carved off the existing house.
So was that, let me, hold on one second, so was that your property at the time that you subdivi, subdivided Homestead? That's behind the tennis court, that's...
Mm-hmm.
Well, it was two parcels, I owned the house and the tennis court, and my dad owned the remaining four and a half acres.
And so, but, but it was one parcel as it came in, so that was Lot 1, 'cause it was an existing house, okay?
So then it would be a conforming lot, it wouldn't be a pre-existing non-conforming?
It was always...
It wasn't a new lot, it was a...
It was always conforming, yeah, that's my point.
It was, yeah, it, it was conforming with the frontage and for a two-family, always was, and they made it that way, too, um, as, as it came off on this plan. So he is protected, and I understand the query, okay, but that's not the way to do it. So, but you will be protected for the closing, and the town will stand behind that, I know what we, I know what you did, I know what we did, and there's no reason that that should be taken away. So a simple, I mean, I can write it, um, with the attorney, very simply, in a paragraph, but not this.
Well, so the registry told me that that first paragraph needs to be included, that states the book and page of my house and the book and page of your decision.
Yeah, that's normal.
Or else they can't link...
Yeah.
This letter, 'cause I need to file this letter at the registry.
Yeah, so if your attorney wants to do a draft other than this thing, including the book and page, which, we have, actually have a, a template for this, uh, Annie, we, we've been doing this for years, you know, in the old subdivisions that pop up in the 50s and 60s, they have all these, like, bond releases that were never done, and they hold up the subdivisions, and so we typically go with that, um, and go through. But to answer your question, it is protected, if your attorney's watching tonight, it is protected, we'll stand behind that, and, uh...
Well, I understand, Wally, that your intent was to leave it as a two-family, you even, I have a letter from you to me stating on...
Yeah, we do, so...
1728, 2008.
But we're gonna stand behind that.
He voted and approved your subdivision with existing Lot 1 as a two-family.
That's right.
We have to insert the language and get it over to the town clerk for timestamp, et cetera, et cetera. Well, that was just a clerical ever, error, it never happened, there's nothing in the decision.
Chris, your decision took seven years to record, and you almost missed the deadline had the board not extended it, we still are going to protect your lot, what's the question?
I was interrupted.
Chris, did you want something to protect this, or not?
Right, you guys, if, if I may?
I just...
Wait, I mean, the, the board's saying that we'll agree to draft something to, to, to state that you're protected as the board decided, you know, when Wally's decision was made, is, is that sufficient?
Just being asked what my problem is, and I'm just trying to explain, I don't have a problem, I'm just operating on what the attorney asked me to do, which was to come before the board and ask that the language clarifying that Lot 1 is not restricted to being a two-family be written in a clarification letter, because it's not in the original decision.
I, I don't disagree with that.
Okay, well, so then we're in a complete agreement.
I think we're all in agreement, it should be pretty straightforward, you're writing this letter.
Yeah, it is, and you are protected, and we knew that.
Oh, I, I didn't question that I, I wasn't, because the lot conforms, I mean, the zoning is the zoning.
Hey, Annie, do we need a motion to...
Yeah.
To, to issue a...
Need a motion to endorse a letter of clarification for Lot 1 here, which is on, um, book and page, uh, 28032, page 275, that isolates, um, 48, uh, King Street from the Homestead subdivision, as it was intended, as it was approved, and that's very simple to do.
Thank you.
Are you, are you finding that as a motion?
No, hold on one second, I just want a little bit more time with this finding of fact.
Can I also ask that with this motion, you maybe authorize this, just the chair to sign it?
Sure.
Just so that we don't, I don't have to cart you guys all in to sign it, just a suggestion.
So, I've got a question for the board. What's wrong with this letter? Basically, it's, what is it, three paragraphs? It basically spells out the error that's gonna go to the registry.
But it wasn't an error, that's the thing, so, and the other thing...
It's not an error, it's a procedural.
It, it's, it's not a procedural in this form, what is a procedural is what we've been doing for decades, um, but we don't need a finding of the facts on a letter to go through.
We just did, Annie, correct me if I'm wrong, we found a typo in my decision, zoning.
For the zoning board, yes.
We had to do...
For the zoning board, yes.
Correct. With all due respect.
Oh, I didn't say it was a typo, yeah.
For the registry.
Well, I, I have no problem coming up with the letter with this language in the top paragraph and signing it by the board, absolutely not, that's, that's not an issue.
I think the problem is, is this decision from back in 2007, I believe it was dated, does not call out Lot 1 separate from 2 through 6, stating that it can be, fall under a two, stay as a two-family, it just...
Well, because it was on the plan itself, it was represented as a two-family, and it met and complied...
But I identified subdivision plans as new Lot 1 was an existing two-family home. You'll find that...
Did you renumber the lots on this? I can't remember if we did that, it's so long.
You'll find that under findings of fact, at the time this application would, this application of decision, the existing home at 48 King Street identified the subdivision plan as new Lot Number 1 was an existing two-family home. The procedural history section of the decision references this fact, so it did spell it out.
Well, no, it's... No, that's, that's written from the lawyer, that's a draft from the lawyer, that's not ours.
No, but it does say in the beginning of your...
But it does, it's the draft from the, I know it's the draft from the lawyer.
In the procedural history of your decision, it says Lot 1 is an existing two-family, but then the decision says that all of the lots need to be single-family, and it doesn't specifically exclude Lot 1.
It was all the new lots. I, I think we're all in agreement here, that, that this is protected, so, um...
What's your timeline?
Well, the closing is supposed to be July 27th.
Yeah, we got plenty of time, so we can get this done in a couple days.
John, you're muted if you were trying to say something. No? Okay.
I don't wanna, you know, I mean, you don't wanna...
Yeah, it's... What?
How fast can your, um, attorney get this over to us?
This, this was...
This was 99% his attorney, I just added in a couple of things here and there, I formatted it to be more consistent with what we've been issuing lately, it, I mean, this was, this was mostly, like, 99% his lawyer, I, the things I added in, in the second paragraph after 48 King Street, I just specific, I added map 17, Lot 74, to be more specific. The second paragraph, um, I just...
You don't, you don't have to explain, but I, I gotta agree, I mean, we do this all the time, I see this all the time from my attorneys.
Oh, I do, I do, but my difference was, was on this here, is that when we submit, um, something that's coming in from his attorney, it's usually, it's, and we've got, gosh, I must have signed hundreds of these over the, over the 30 years I've been here, uh, it's pretty standard, we don't get involved with this, because they draft the language from the attorney, it comes into the board in a letter form, we agree to it, we change it if we have to, and we sign it, but we did this.
I know the registry of deeds, and I've just dealt with them, and I don't want a signed copy from the planning board.
Oh, I, I, we do sign it, we absolutely sign it, and, and we go through, we do the whole board if we have to want it.
So, let's finish what you wanna say, so...
What am I missing?
What's the issue with...
The issue was, we didn't write this, and it's on our letterhead.
We, we...
Annie wrote it on our letterhead.
No, like I, like I said, this was 99% his lawyer, I took it, you know, futzed with it the way I saw fit, from the planning board, what we, what I've seen issued and things like that, I changed what I didn't thought...
When did this come in?
Just today.
Oh, this came in today?
Yeah.
So you guys did all this today?
Um, I mean, I don't know when your lawyer got it to you, this was just today, or was it just today?
Yeah, she gave it to me.
Oh, when, when did the first call come in about this?
Last, a week and a half.
Last week?
Like, hold on, um...
I, I just...
It was like the 8th or 9th or something like that.
I, I just, just for future, if you get a call on stuff like this, why does, why didn't you call us?
She called me.
Oh, okay.
I called the chair.
All right, 'cause I was involved on this thing here, and we could have clarified it pretty quick, you already could have had your letter.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll say for, I mean, if, I have to defend myself, I explained that I didn't think this was necessary, given what the decision stated.
Yeah.
That the procedural history states Lot 1 is an existing two-family home, it meets the current zoning, so it...
And they made it meet the current zoning, too, it always did, because it was for...
And it also, the lot has nothing to do with the subdivision, it didn't gain access through Homestead Lane, I, so...
That's right.
But I understand, as the person selling the home, you wanna be secure in the fact that you're not gonna have issues, so that's why this was created.
Right, so it should come on...
Well, I think also, just point of fact, that it's not just a matter of him being secure, it's, uh, the real estate attorney's telling him he needs this to complete the transaction on his home.
No one's in disagreement.
So I don't see a reason why the board's gonna stand in the way, to be very honest.
No, we're not, okay, but it's gotta come from the attorney, 'cause the attorney's gonna be doing the work.
But, but it did come from the attorney, Annie put it on our letterhead.
I don't see the attorney's letterhead right on here, does anybody else see that? That says Towne...
I'm, I'm just confused.
This is just a template. She was just preparing something on your-
Behalf.
So, that you, something that looked like what you would file. It's just a template. You guys can do what you need to, to it.
Lisa just did it.
So, if, if we're happy with this language, can we just take this, put it on our letter-
Oh, we do this all the time. I can tell you many-
John's trying to say something.
But they've all come from the attorney.
Go ahead, John.
Can't really hear you.
Yeah, sorry. Is the issue just the fact that it's not on our letterhead? Like, let's take this. If we're all happy with the language in it, copy it, put it on Groveland, the proper letterhead, and we'll sign it. I don't understand the issue.
It is on our letterhead.
It's on our letterhead. It needs to come from the attorney.
Okay, then how do we make that happen?
Easy. His attorney calls me or calls Annie. We're done, and we vote to sign it when it comes in, and it's done. That's it. That's all we're waiting for.
Can I, so why, if we are the ones making the decisions, should, or well, I say we. I'm saying the royal we, it's the planning board. I apologize. If the planning board is the ones making, are the ones making the decision, why wouldn't it be on our letterhead, I think, is my question?
Right. I mean, I, I don't see why we'd sign something from an attorney's-
On our attorney's-
Yeah, isn't the attorney going to send the letter? Then we're going to have to edit it, put it right back on a piece of paper with our letterhead and then sign it.
Just like this. Just like this.
Actually, no. What, what I'm anticipating is, is this first paragraph, okay, for clarification, and that the board just endorses it, not a findings of fact on two pages on Towne and Groveland letterhead.
But, but if the facts are accurate, I, I don't see the issue.
That's, again-
I don't know. How much?
I, I'll, so I formatted this as far as the, so the regarding was put there because the registry of deeds needs it. When we do a decision for, when we, any decision for a minor modification, for an insubstantial change, I generally put a findings of fact to ensure that someone looking at it in thirty years kind of has a bit of a-
Context.
Timeline, I guess, of the procedural history prior to whatever we are changing, which is, so that's what that finding of fact is. If you want me to change it to say, you know, procedural history or something, because my thought is, especially, you know, looking at planning board decisions passed, conservation commission decisions passed, zoning board, whatever it is, sometimes things are there that have no context, and it's very difficult to go back thirty years later, which is why I, we, we've recently, and I would say it's probably since Rebecca was here, started doing the finding of fact thing. So, it, so that was that. And then obviously, the decision part is blank at this point. But that was my thought process. If, if the, so, so that's all. I mean-
No, I mean, I tend to, I mean, if there's no issue with the finding of facts, and, you know, it, and if we would need to issue a letter just stating that we agree with the attorney's letter, I don't see any issue why we wouldn't just endorse this. That's, it's in front of us today.
That's how I felt, but Jason-
John has something to say.
Jason has something to say. He had his hand up for the last ten minutes.
I mean, I understand where Chris and his attorney's coming from. The decision contradicts itself because even though it does make mention of the two-family lot, but then it references lot one through six. If it referenced lot two through six like this letter recommends, there wouldn't be an issue. And that's why it's written up this way. So, I would recommend making a motion to sign this and be done with it.
And that's how I saw it, Wally.
Sorry, John.
John, did you have something to add?
Yeah. No, I was just going to say, I agree with Annie. I think it's worth including the details of the history because it gives some context down the road. And I have no issue with the way it's written up, and I think ready to, to support it.
Yeah, I have no issues here as well. The only thing that possibly you could throw in there is that procedural history. Say, you could refer back to procedural history, and it is spelled out in that letter stating that lot one is an existing two-family home. It's, it is there if you wanted to. But other than that, I think it looks good, and-
I tend to agree. Wally, you on board?
No, not at the moment. I need to, I want to read, look at this and then match this with this because it is protected, okay, and it always was. And, and I believe, I was just looking at the engineer, Port did this one, right?
Excuse me?
Port did this one?
Yes.
On the engineering. And this lot was never part of the subdivision and, at all. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna tune this up to put findings of fact, then we need to tune the findings of fact that the board, that the engineer of the subdivision made sure that that particular lot met the zoning at the time, okay, and it was never part of the subdivision, nor was it intent to be part of the subdivision.
That's basically what it says.
What it says, though, right?
Right. The, it, the only issue is the language around that restriction of single-family, lot one to six.
Semantics. Okay. So, can we approve this and tune it?
No.
I, I mean-
It's a draft.
You would have to come back after you two, well, no. I mean, I can sign it after the fact.
I think that it would depend on what the motion that the board makes because it-
Yeah, we can just get one signature on it. It usually is on these for the registry. We don't need the full board.
What do you want to see for language?
Well, let me look at this, at a, I mean, I just, if we're going to put all this stuff in it, I want to make sure it's accurate. So, that's all. I mean, I'm going to sign it.
If we're changing more than, you know, grammatical or-
That's all it is. It's grammatical and, and finding of fact.
I, I just, I just worry depending on the amount that gets changed, that it might need to be done at a public-
Well, I will, I will compare it with the actual memorandum, since I wrote that with this, okay, and, and just make sure this, but he is free and clear, and we will make sure that that happens, and that it's not going to be held up on any closing.
He doesn't want his closing to be held up as well, right?
His closing's the eighteenth.
Twenty.
Of July-
It's still gonna-
Listen, I'm talking twenty-four hours, guys. What are you talking?
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
That's it.
Title examined if they don't, you know what I mean, if they don't catch us the title.
Well, that's, that's why this typically comes from the attorney, okay, with perhaps a little bit more legalese in it if they need it, okay? And we sign these things all, it did not.
It has to be on our letterhead.
Well, it came from the attorney. I just copy and pasted it onto our letterhead.
Okay.
I did. And like I said, the, the changes I made, I, I added map seventeen, lot seventy-four.
Okay. Do you have the original letter from the attorney? I can look at that tomorrow.
Hey, guys, I'm, I'm going to fly a motion here. I make a motion to a plan that the endorsement dated June twenty, twenty twenty-three, as written.
John Stokoe second.
With slight modifications if need be by the vice chairman, within twenty-four hours.
Okay. We also need the authorization of the chair to sign.
As well, as well as an authorization for the chair to sign off on any said chair, said changes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Dennis McNulty, aye.
Chris Goodwin, aye.
Brad Legos, aye.
Walt Sartain, aye.
John Stokoe, aye.
So, a motion passes.
Okay. I'll get this back to you in twenty-four hours. You'll be all set.
Sorry, John, what did you say?
We were, we were bored. We just wanted to talk about it.
Aye. Okay.
I don't want to talk about this anymore.
All right, what else you got?
We got the updates and decisions.
Good luck.
Updates and discussions.
Updates and discussions. I don't got my glasses on.
Sorry, give me one quick second.
And we'll also throw in the town planner update too.
All right.
While she's making her updates and discussions.
Let me just forward this to Wally right now, so I don't forget, or I don't get sidetracked by doing something else.
It is too bad that the registry or attorneys can't refer back to that original-
Actually, since this decision's on here, it's a, it's a really good thing for the board to review because for a long time, when I wrote these decisions for two and a half decades, we came through. We initially started, which we have now, a menu item, which included, you'll see similar language, which is where all the shade trees, the buffer trees, street signs, children playing signs, et cetera, all that came in there. In every subdivision, we learned something new. We put it in the menu item. And the menu selection was printed out for each subdivision, and it went down the board, and everybody circled what they wanted in there that became standard language. Well, when, somehow, when these got shipped out initially to some of the engineers to write them, the menu list completely disappeared, and language was missing, which is why the buffer trees and all the other things were there. So, but this is one of the ones that has it in it. And there's standard language in here that goes in every single subdivision that I, I believe has now been put it back in there. But you'll see, like, for instance, item number sixteen, okay, all the signage that goes in there and everything like that. So, it just gives you some good ideas on some of these as they come in, what to add. And then, of course, each new subdivision has its own challenges. And then, whatever those are, we added to the menu list in case it popped up again to jog your memory, to throw it in the decision in there. But it, they came in pretty handy on quite a few of the subdivisions that we did once we got these things rolling. Because the subdivision control law, you know, the board, at my time, we updated, it took us quite a few years to do it, but the one previous to that was in the seventies. So, it really didn't have much in it.
You were doing this in the seventies?
Not me.
I thought you said the seventies. I was like, what, were you ten?
Well, the, the other subdivision control law, the subdivision control law was last updated in the seventies with, I think, Kenny Hamilton, actually, way back when.
It is, it is in that same, it's the same letter that it shows.
It is.
That procedure numbers, number one is the fact that lot one is existing two-family home. It's there.
Are we still doing updates, or what have we done? Yeah.
I'm waiting for you, Annie. We're giving you ample time.
So, as far as updates, I will be sending out, that was off, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. As far as updates, tomorrow, I'm going to be sending out an email regarding the Strawberry Fields one fifty Center Street grant project we have. The engineers put together a story map website and a survey, so I'm going to send it out to you. It's going to be a pretty basic email that I'm going to also kindly ask for you to forward to other folks you know in town to try to get as many survey responses as we can. Attached to that email is also going to be a flyer for the next public meeting that we will be hosting on that project.
Still the twenty-seventh?
Let me double check because I don't want to say for sure on a meeting if I get it wrong. Do, 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 do. It's loading, sorry. I believe it is the twenty-seventh, though. Yep, Thursday, July twenty-seventh, from seven to eight-thirty, and it will be here. So, we're hoping we can get as many survey responses before then, so the team has a bit more clarity on where to go for that.
TJ's bringing the donuts.
And then the comprehensive master plan committee is still going through comments and whatnot. Speaking of master plans, if you were reappointed to the comprehensive master, comprehensive master plan steering committee, the town clerk is doing appointment hours between Monday evenings and then Tuesdays and Thursdays from ten to two.
What, what's that for again?
To get reappointed to the comprehensive master plan steering committee.
Get sworn in?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, sorry, sworn in, not reappointed. You were already reappointed. And then, do you want me to just jump into town planner updates? I mean, these are all town planner updates, I guess. Nine thirty-one Salem Street, the gas station over by Federal Way, they are designing their tanks for the gas pumps. So, their lawyer reached out. I told them that, to send me them as soon as we, they received them, so we could send them off to T E C for peer review.
What was his, he had to do a milestone every, what, we checked in every six months?
He, with Sam, for his temporary occupancy.
But what has he done up till now?
So, it's just been getting the tanks designed from my understanding.
What about the storefront part of it he was supposed to open and?
So, based on my limited-
It's not open.
-understanding of the way, like, gas station leases and whatnot work, usually the lease for the convenience store is part of the lease for the gas station. They're one in the same. So, that is why it's been, the convenience store aspect of it has been held off because, like, I'm, like, you usually see, like, one thing paired with the other, likes, you usually see, like, Dunkin' Donutses and Cumberland Farms and things like that. So, it's like one in the same.
That's not how we structured him.
So, he's leasing, he's going to be leasing the gas?
That's what it sounds like. He's looking for Cumberland Farms.
That was my understanding.
But when we let him temporarily open, that wasn't the condition, that I'm going to wait for Cumberland Farms to come in. He had to reach a certain milestone and check in with Sam.
So, yeah, and it was, well, it was Sam's judgment to be okay with whatever those milestones kind of were, whether Sam was satisfied with them or not.
To no, for me, right?
I don't remember exactly what we issued at, at this point.
If I remember correctly, the whole decision prior to us being on the board was, he has to finish everything before he opened. But the board was nice enough to grant him temporary occupancy-
Yeah.
-to open up with the understanding that every few months, he would check in with Sam, and he would keep the ball rolling. It wouldn't stall. And-
Well, if the tanks are next, and then-
That's two years later.
Yeah.
Plus, right? We're still, we were waiting for refrigerators for the convenience store to open about a year ago.
We need an update from Sam then, too.
Okay.
Probably by the next meeting on the eighteenth, I'd like to see an update.
Wasn't there going to be a coffee shop there?
So, the motion that was made was on March first.
What year?
Twenty twenty-two. Upon a motion by Walter Sorenson to allow for an insubstantial change to the April seventh, twenty seventeen decision, general condition number six, to allow for a temporary occupancy of the auto body repair shop portion of nine twenty-nine, nine thirty-one Salem Street for one hundred and eighty days, and then thirty days after that, at the discretion of the building commissioner, with progress updates from the building commissioner. Jim Bojaj just seconded the motion. The vote was four to zero, unanimous in favor.
So, we got to get an update from Sam.
Okay.
Next.
Sorry, one second. Sorry, I can't talk and type at the same time.
That's okay.
I think that about covered it. One fifty Center Street, the master plan, and nine thirty-one Salem Street were the, the big ones. I, I believe I mentioned to the board prior that the zoning board was hearing an application for a use permit for nine twelve Salem Street, the large property behind Groveland Gas. They're getting their site plan review, aquifer protection overlay and land disturbance, stuff all set for the planning board. Still waiting on that. And then, there was a potential aquifer overlay protection special permit that would be applied for soon.
What's going in there?
For which one? The, just this aquifer or the nine twelve Salem Street?
Nine twelve is a contractor storage.
Contractor storage.
Oh, it's contractor storage, okay.
Big building.
Okay.
So, we haven't talked about something that needs to talk about for the bylaw, other than the subdivision rules, is traffic studies.
Yeah. To be included in all-
One particular Salem Street's going to, I would think it's going to flag.
So, that's easy. A motion to add or add to the, for special permit, that we do traffic studies with every application.
I mean, it has to be done at town meeting.
Not if we put it under subdivision control law as a board policy.
But I thought you just said specifically not for subdivision control law. You said for special permits, yeah.
Because it's basically states in the subdivision control law regs. Though we also want to add it because, like-
For special permit.
For a special permit because it was called out, and it wasn't a bylaw.
No, I, yeah, yeah. No, I'm on the same page. I'm just saying, I think the board can ask for one, but we can't just change the bylaw without going to-
So, so, under, under all applications, special permit, we had that when you applied for a special permit to go through, depending on where it was, because you didn't know where it was going to be in the town, that where applicable, the subdivision control law would apply. And traffic study is where that got picked up, signage, the way a road's built, et cetera.
When you're talking about industrial zone, you're not talking subdivision.
So, but some of the rules that, that complied in there. So, the other thing that we can do short of the bylaw right now is enact, because that's the way it always was. Somehow, it got dropped. And, and I don't know how sometimes these things got dropped, but-
I kind of like it. I, I think it's-
No, I think the traffic study is, is a necessary tool that, that we need.
Can the board request a traffic study?
The, under special permit, we can request anything.
Yeah, absolutely. It can be requested by the board.
So, why don't we just make it a, until we can get to the bylaw aspect, a, a standard policy that every application before the board, particularly special permit, require the traffic study.
Right. And, and the reason for that is because after you submit the application, and after you go through the meetings with the board, it's just to circumvent that, oh, there's one more thing we want you to do at the end. I mean, that, I don't-
Yeah, it should, it always was. I mean, we always did traffic studies.
Exactly. That way he knows, that he knows upfront, when he's getting his stuff together, start, start that process, that's right.
So, just make it board policy. I'll fly that motion, and then we'll kick it in later where we have to, if necessary. But, and it's not, we're doing this new. This is the way it's always been. Somehow, it, it got omitted. So, let's put it back. I, I guess would be that there. So, motion for board policy at the moment?
Okay. So, we're not, it's not a change to the rules and regulations, though, because, okay, I'm just trying to make sure we're doing everything. Motion to make a new-
I don't know. You can call it reenacting the standard board policy for the last three decades to include the traffic study just as it is in the subdivision control law.
Wouldn't seem fit by the board.
Well, special permit, yeah.
Yeah.
If we get a second.
Yeah, I was going to say somebody needs to-
I'll give you a second. Hope to do a roll call.
I'd like to better understand what we're, what we're doing here is, we, we're flying a motion to make it-
Not mandatory, but under special permit, that we can do, when the application, you know, on the application process and in the opening meetings, that we can ask for traffic flow and studies.
We could already do that.
We can, and on subdivision control law and special permit, you're right, we can. What we're doing with the motion is reenacting the, the board's long-term standing for traffic studies that somehow got hiccupped along the way. So, we're, we're just cementing it, that that's what we're doing.
So, so essentially, when they come to us for the application for the special permit, the, and their punch list will just be a traffic study.
Correct.
Correct.
So, it'll, it'll save the time of coming to the board, and the board now saying-
Well, I'll give you an example.
-to get a traffic study, right?
Yeah, it should be part of the, the whole process.
Eight thirty-three Salem Street, towards the end, T E C asks for traffic flow. All right? So, if we knew that in the beginning, we wouldn't have to go back out and do, you know-
Wouldn't delay the process.
Pictures and, well, not delay the process. It just adds more. It was like, you know, another four thousand dollars worth of, you know, plans and planning and, you know, providing a traffic study. Had, you know, it was known in the beginning, it would have been all spelled out in part of the survey, would have been that particular, you know, page.
So, a, any special permit needs to have a traffic study? We're implementing traffic study on any, where it seems fit?
I mean, if you're not on, if you're not on ninety-seven, if you're not on Salem Street, if you're not on-
Well, I think we just need to be careful.
How about, how about the-
How about, how about that, everyone requires it unless, unless otherwise dictated otherwise by the board?
Well, again, I think the problem is that if we're giving conditions to the when you need it, then it still needs to come before the board, and we need to say, yes, you need it.
Right.
Right. Right, so we're doing what we can do now, anyway. I mean, that would just be a knowledge thing for us to know that. So I think, I think it needs to say that every special permit, every special permit application will require a traffic study.
Just as it always was.
Or it just needs to be, the board, the board will request when it sees fit.
Just when it always was.
It's just the way it's always was.
But again, I think we need to be careful with, with the motion, that the, the board policy can't be the, everything needs it unless it's fit, as, in, in our attempt to speed things along, because.
If it's always in there.
Requires them to come before the board and ask if they need it anyways.
Let me give you an example, where I think the board would.
I just caution the board, getting this deep into the discussion, when it wasn't posted as an agenda item, because I know, but to make a motion like this when it wasn't posted as the agenda item, I just worry. There's been no, that, I just.
We can move it to the eighteen.
I, I think if we want to have this as a full agenda item, you know, because I, I note at the beginning of everything, for discussion, impossible vote. I think that we need to make sure.
Move this to the eighteen.
Okay.
But I'll give you an example. Industrial Zone also calls out Nelson Street. If there was a ten thousand square foot parcel on Nelson Street, and somebody was gonna build a shed, there's no need for a traffic study. You know what I mean?
Right. No, right. If you put it in there for the special permit, it's, they're, immediately, they're being told that they are required by one. They wouldn't know until we tell them otherwise. So how do you?
So we'll have some time to, to dial it out.
Now all of a sudden, someone puts four thousand dollars into a traffic study when we, they could come to us, and we say, no, you don't need to do that. Yeah.
Okay.
Would have to be known at.
So let's just, I think, like you said, I think we should probably have this conversation further in July. We don't have to do it right now.
Okay, well, first of all, we're covered under item seven on this. And number two, we're not doing anything new, gentlemen. We are putting back what the, has been a longstanding policy by the board, okay? And if the applicant so wishes, they can ask for a waiver, just like they do for everything else under the special permit.
If it, if it's not on the, if it's not an express bylaw right now.
No, it needs to be. But it always was. That, that's the thing. See, we need to, and maybe I'll do some, some looking up on this, but that was always part of any special permit in anything that came in.
But it hasn't been.
It hasn't been, that's right. So it dropped out of the system somewhere, somewhere like circles, that disappeared. But anyway, so. Three oh three five. Anyway, so, so we, we're just putting it back as a board policy.
But let Annie pop it up as an agenda.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I don't disagree. Okay, so, so now we got that nailed down. So if there's nothing else, we can float a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
If that's it, we can.
That's all. I, I have nothing else.
Motion adjourned.
Let's make this an agenda item in the next meeting.
Okay.
Please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, roll call.
Dennis McNulty, aye.
Chris Goodwin, aye.
Brad Legos, aye.
Walt Sarnson, aye.
John Stokes, aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Thanks for watching.
Thank you.
Thanks, Groveland.